Well, lose lose.
Oh, yeah.
You were in a losing mood, weren't you?
Yeah, we're sure.
You're in a bottomed way out.
Good evening, welcome, welcome to our afternoon, I should say. Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of Westminster Mayor and Common Council. Thanks to everybody for accommodating the change in schedule. Also does meet here in City Hall on the second and fourth Monday of every month. Three hundred council meetings, although open to the public here at City Hall, are also available and streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and West. Well, begins with me do every meeting, the flag is in my hand. Let's leave it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where they should, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As a courtesy to everyone, please take the moment to silence your cell phones or any other non-homic devices that might disturb the debate. Uh, opposite of my Saturday's agenda and entire information pack that the council will be using is available online on the city's website. Uh, before we go in further, I just want to say to Council Chairman Gilbert, be in a picture.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
That's great.
It's a time to, isn't it? Is there a song?
Uh, no. There is not.
Right.
Um, uh, we have, um, a public hearing this evening, or a fact of air, I should say. Public hearing and public hearings in the city of Westminster are conducted by the mayor, so I'll turn the gavel and the chair over to him.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so this is for, uh, the constant murate. This public hearing has been properly, properly published in the Carroll County Times on Friday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, meeting all state of Maryland requirements. City of Westminster, notice of a proposed real property tax increase. The mayor and common counsel of the city of Westminster proposes to increase real property taxes. One, for the tax year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, the estimated real property assessable base will increase by two point three four percent from two million forty-one thousand, sorry, from two billion forty-one million, three hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars to two billion eighty-nine million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, thirty-four dollars. If the city of Westminster maintains the current tax rate of zero point five six per one hundred dollars of assessment, real property tax revenues will increase by two point three four percent, resulting in two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight of new real property tax revenues. In order to fully offset the effect of increasing assessments, the real property tax rate should be reduced to zero point five four two seven, the constant yield tax rate. The city of Westminster is considering not reducing its real property tax rate enough to fully offset increasing assessments. The city of Westminster proposes to adopt a real property tax rate of fifty-six cents per one hundred dollars of assessment. This tax rate is two point three four percent higher than the constant yield tax rate and will generate two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars in additional property tax revenues. So anyone that would like to, um, make a comment?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
My only comment would be that, just to point out, we are not changing the actual rate. We are just abiding by a state law that requires us to make this announcement. I just want to make sure to point that out, that we're not changing the rate at all, staying exactly the same.
All right, thank you, Mr. Councilman Black.
Dr. Becker, there.
Yes.
I also like to add to that, that, uh, we are keeping the rate the same in a time when inflation over the last, uh, year and a half has been significant. Um, and yet we are not increasing taxes, we are managing to afford citizens of Westminster the same, uh, level of services that they've come to expect without any increase, despite the inflation.
No one else wishes to speak at this time, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you. Move along, uh, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes in the meeting of the mayor and council. On April tenth, twenty twenty-three, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
With the motion by Mr. Dayhoff, with the fact that second, with the second by Ms. Gilbert, all those in favor, please say aye. Those who say nay, the I see what I have to say. Minutes are approved. We have two items on the consent agenda, they have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Action to approve.
Second.
With the motion by Ms. Gilbert and the second by Mr. Hoff, all over the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, the I see what I have to say. Consent agenda is approved. Report from the mayor, Dr. Becker.
Hey, uh, thank you, Councilman, um, Council President Becker, this four P M. time has thrown off. I accidentally voted on the minutes, so, um.
Be good before you go away.
Thank goodness, okay. All right, um, so, uh, I know we have some other events to get to, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments, uh, in my report. So on April seventeenth, I attended, I believe, with, uh, every member of the council, um, along with some of the city staff, the opening of Magic's Autonomous Robotics Innovation Center, uh, or Eric. Um, this was such a great event that showcased the talent in Westminster and the region in, um, autonomous robotics, and I'm really looking forward to hearing more from Magic and Eric regarding their, um, their facility. Uh, this past weekend, I had some, I had the opportunity to spend some real quality time with Governor Moore, Lieutenant Governor Miller, and Commissioner, uh, Bierman over the weekend in Western Maryland. Um, I was also able to spend some time with other, um, state and federal elected officials, and I just want to mention that I have been incredibly grateful for all the support that we have received from our officials at both the state and the federal level. Uh, and then last but not least, um, I know everyone was disappointed regarding the cancellation of the wine stroll on Saturday, um, as I mentioned, I was in Western Maryland, but, uh, I wanted to take just a couple of seconds to thank staff for, um, making these hard often quote, "there is no right decision" decision. Um, I do believe that the correct decision was made, and I know that any decision made by staff and council, uh, we don't make lightly, so I just wanted to take a few minutes to extend my thanks, um, and gratitudes and, um, to say thank you to, to staff for that. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, uh, Dr. Becker, appreciate that. Um, next item on the agenda is a report to standing committees. Uh, begin with, uh, Mr. Dayhoff, uh, reports for the Carroll County Arts Council.
Thank you, Mr. President, a lot of exciting programming on, uh, over at the Arts Council. Um, consult the, uh, website for additional information. Uh, the website's very good and lays out a lot of really exciting programming. That would be my report, Mr. Becker.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Uh, Mr. Hoff, Economic and Community Development Committee.
I have no report today.
All right, very good. Um, to have the Finance Committee, I will just say that we are in the midst of the Finance Committee's report. Thanks to the staff, particularly our city administrator, you know, for, uh, you know, hard work and coming together with the budget, you all can receive a copy of the document, uh, tomorrow. Uh, we're going to have several days then to be able to be good. Um, and then we will have the presentation of the budget next Monday, a special meeting. We look forward to everybody having a chance to do that. Um, we'll reiterate that, uh, although you will see it, you know, Wednesday tomorrow, very pleased to provide a budget, uh, to you all to consider that, um, has no tax increase for the tenth year in a row, uh, which we're pleased about, uh, continue to provide you know, same level of services to, uh, you know, our citizens that they have come to get used to, um, and there's some extra things as well. So, um, you know, it's a good budget, uh, it's balanced budget, back to the school. So far, we're pleased about it and, uh, look forward to having the conversations with you all as well. And that's it for the Finance Committee. Ms. Gilbert, her statement.
I want to draw everybody's attention to our website regarding all of our city positions. Um, we also have some exciting news that we have just posted today, the position of the Director of Public Works. Um, we also have several positions available, um, still, we're trying to fill them. Um, so if you, uh, may not be quite qualified for that Director of Public Works, you can pull up the website and take a peek at our summer camp, uh, positions, our pole positions. Uh, so we have Camp Director, Light Guard, Pole Manager, Assistant Pole Manager, Camp Counselor. They're all great jobs to supplement your income if you're a teacher or maybe if you, um, just happen to be a college student for the summer. They're going to be great opportunities for you. Um, in addition, we have openings in our police department, um, for our communication specialists and some entry-level and lateral officers. Along with Public Works, we just posted a construction inspector position. So please take a look, um, at our website for applications and chat description.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Black, you're public.
Thank you, Mr. President. On April nineteenth, Westminster Police Department held their annual awards and promotion ceremony at the West Western Conference Center. Many of the Westminster Police Department employees and community partners were recognized, notably Corporal Bill Long was designated as the Police Officer of the Year. Lieutenant Steve Blackwell was designated as Supervisor of the Year. Officer Cynthia Hall was designated as the Rookie of the Year, Police Rookie of the Year, and Parking Officer Michelle Lyon, who I know we all love, was designated as civilian, I meant that seriously, that wasn't, uh, um, what do you call that? Being a gas. Um, Michelle Lyon was designated Civilian Employee of the Year. Uh, so that's wonderful, I know, uh, I know just about everyone, uh, here was probably there, so, um, except myself, because I had thrown my back out, and I'm sorry that I was not able to attend, but I was in, uh, pretty excruciating pain that morning, actually. Um, later that day, Carroll County College, Carroll Community College Criminal Justice Program held their annual law enforcement appreciation award ceremony, and Detective Maureen Kent received an award for her criminal investigations work during twenty twenty-two. Most notably, the investigation of a burglar of the city of Westminster, Badly Fitness Center, which was, you know, that was, uh, uh, that was a pretty nice piece of work. That was, um, that was something I think we were all, you know, concerned about, upset about, and, uh, quite a good job getting that case closed. I know she didn't do it completely alone, but, um, had a big part in it, uh, and the great, great that she was recognized for that. Corporal Bill Long also received an award for his proactive patrols during twenty twenty-two. These award recipients, along with several Westminster Police Department Command staff members, attended and represented the Westminster Police Department at that event at the college. That is all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Ms. Black. And, uh, can you also do a report on the Public Works Committee?
The Streets Department planted, uh, a snow goose cherry tree at the Boys and Girls Club on East Main Street for Armor Day, planted a dogwood tree at City Hall, and set out eight planter boxes with flowers along Main Street, which I will say my wife is very excited about. They also repaired a catch basin on Rich Mar Street and repaired potholes on Schoolhouse Alley. Um, new tennis nets were installed at City Park. Um, Utilities Maintenance Department will be flushing hydrants this week, as they have been for a while now. Um, April twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, from seven to eleven P M. And the location of our Belgrove Square, uh, Michael's Ridge, Snowman, Blue Ridge View, Pars Ridge, Pennsylvania Avenue, John Street, Carroll Street, Furnace Hills, Stone Ridge, Overlook, and Liberty Street. Probably see a little discoloration in your water while this is happening, doesn't mean the water's unsafe, but it does get a little bit discolored when they're doing that. One quick comment on this, you know, when I read these reports, talk about these different things that Public Works does, this is just in addition to the work they do every single day, doing all the other stuff that keeps the city running from a Public Works perspective, these are kind of the over and above things. Um, so I just wanted to make that comment, because I know I read these things each time, and it dawned on me that I hope no one thinks this is fall that you do, with all the extra stuff that they do. That's all I have, Mr. Colonel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Black. The dogwood tree at, um, City Hall was planted, Mr. Dick may know this. Was that a tree that was planted for Neil Richley?
Yes.
So, you know, we should know the passing of Neil Richley. Long-time member of our pre-commission, and, uh, helped, uh, you know, do some of the planning, and made Westminster through the city. Uh, long-time community activist, worked for the county for a few years. Certainly, uh, you know, with Neil and. Recreation of Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
And, uh, Mr. Isley was a very good friend. We will miss him greatly. He did a lot of really great work for, um, City of Westminster, for the pre-commission. He also had a lot to do with the Flower and Jazz Fest, Jazz is the area, the original thing. Mr. Full disclosure, Mr. Isley and I have, our farms are not adjoining, but they're very close by, and we constantly swap equipment, and he never missed an opportunity to come over and share with him his wisdom as to how the city of Westminster should be run. Um.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, there was mention of the Main Street Mile, or, um, we had a power outage that evening, and the Streets Department just came in and helped us with all of the intersections. Uh, the Streets, the Streets Department, the Public Works Department, they just rock. They just did a great job. The Main Street Mile went, 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 went really well again this year. The Main Street Mile was a regional event, because everybody wants to get their personal best time for running downhill, uh, for a mile. It's, uh, it's, it's a great event. Um, we're really excited about getting the, uh, the, um, Wayfield Valley Trail. Um, if, um, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, Mr. Dick, wonder when that, when, when do you estimate that will get started? I'm getting a lot of calls.
As in, last week, they said it should be in the first of the day.
Okay, that's good information, I really appreciate it. Um, as a first responder, I thought the Wine Street, uh, the Wine Stroll, uh, call was a great decision, and I really, really appreciate it, because I would have hated to have been out in that mess and emergency equipment. Uh, it was a great call, and I applaud you for doing it, thank you very much. Uh, you very well could have saved lives, because we had lightning strikes all over, all over the county, uh, doing that. Um, I think, I think that's it for me, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dayhoff.
Yes, sir.
Um, I have nothing to make for staffing from the Hapology Committee. Now, along the council comments and discussion, we have council members get to the opportunity to mention anything that's, uh, on their minds, that is either, uh, something that is on tonight's agenda, and, uh, no. I just want to leave that off by some, in sharing some really good news. The governor today signed the legislation that, um, allows M V E to permit our water reuse project, so we're very pleased about that. And we got to notice that was going to happen last night, so unfortunately none of us were able to get down there to attend, because we had some things going on, would have been nice to be there, but, uh, we appreciate the governor, you know, don't get early on, because this was an emergency, like question, as soon as it's fine, that goes into effect, and so, you know, we can, uh, start, you know, saying, I need store right away to, you know, see when they're going to issue that permit now, so. We're very pleased we've gotten that done. Um, many thanks to everybody who participated in that. I particularly want to say, you know, of course, the Zim House, they've got the ball rolling quickly and gathered everything together. The mayor did a terrific job going down and leading the city's representation when we went down to testify, and, uh, really, I think very lucidly explained what we were doing, why we needed to do it, and I think, uh, you know, Mr. Hoff and I, we were there to back her up, and I think it, uh, that means, you know, made a good case, and we were very pleased with all of it. Both bills, the House version and the Senate version, both passed, and we also want to thank Senator Ready and Delegate Rose for having, you know, picking up the, uh, you know, the bells and the, you know, guiding the troops for it, so. Um, I want to reiterate the mayor's remarks, you know, about, um, the wine stroll, you know, these are, these are difficult choices. You know, I have to, and I, you know, I know a lot of people were second guessing us on Saturday morning, saying, "Look at the weather, it's beautiful." But I have to tell you, I was never so glad to see the heavens open, as I was at one fifteen, and, uh, vindicated the decision, and, uh, then it stopped raining briefly. I said, "Hope that's not it, and it started even harder." A few minutes after that hail, you know, um, so it was, it was, it was really full of storms. Again, thank you, Ms. Gruber, for doing the right thing. Um, and that's all I, all I had, Mr. Black.
I'm not going to beat dead horse, but it was a great one, that's it, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Dayhoff.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I wanted to reiterate, uh, how wonderful the opening of Magic was, and I wanted to make note that, um, uh, the Commerce Secretary was here, and I think he will be here much more in the future. And I need to point out that Siggy Tringle is the Deputy Secretary of Commerce, who lives in Westminster. Um, I've had the, the pleasure and the honor of working with her a great deal in the past, on my visit to, uh, the Femenia and other occasions her had, if it's a high ranking elected official in Femenia, and, uh, I think we've got a wonderful connection. Um, Ms. Gilbert will probably elaborate upon the, uh, uh, the Westminster Fire Department two-hundredth anniversary, it was like a weekend. And, um, I didn't speak too long, uh, I was short.
You were short and saving.
I was, uh, but it was a great, it was a great event, a lot of folks from all over the state attended, because it is the two-hundredth anniversary, um, of the Westminster Fire Department. It is actually, along with the Westminster Police Department, too, of the, of the, uh, oldest agencies in the country. A lot of people are not aware of that. The Westminster Police Department was first mentioned in eighteen nineteen in our charter. Um, and, uh, the Westminster Fire Department can maybe back to eighteen oh eight. Um, Mr. President, if it's okay with you, um, I would like to ask the Personnel Committee, I've had a number of folks call me about the jobs that are available in the city of Westminster, and they go to our website, they can't find them. Wonder if there's some investment that we can make on the website? Can we highlight them, can we do something, can we, can we come up with a flyer, can we? Because, uh, the West City Administrator, take a look at that. Yeah, it's like, if you could do that, I'd really appreciate it. I mean, if we could come up with some, something that, that I could just send out to people about the jobs that are available. Everybody wants to work for Ms. Gruber, we love her, I can understand that. Um, but other jobs too. Other jobs in addition, it's not the Ms. Gruber's.
Sounds, okay.
Um, I did attend the, uh, annual Westminster Police Department Awards Ceremony, it was a great ceremony, and I also attended the annual, uh, Carroll Community College Criminal Justice Committee, um, awards event. I didn't speak too long, that did I see? Thank you, Mr. President, that'll be my report.
All right, thank you. Um, and, uh, before we move on, Ms. Gilbert, I will just note that there is on the front page of our website, a, um, quick link that says employment opportunities.
Great.
So perhaps we.
I'll take another look at it.
Make the letters bigger, I don't know, but it's there. Ms. Gilbert.
Yeah, I'll follow up, and then I haven't had any trouble getting to the page of finding the, um, job descriptions and/or what is posted, because I check it out every, before every meeting now. And I'm not sure how the link is working to get to each individual job, because I don't do that, but, um, it's pretty easy. Um, so, um, I'm not going to go into, uh, much on the, uh, decision to cancel the wine stroll, um, because everybody else has already talked about that, um, again, it was a good decision. Um, so thank you for making that hard choice to the Parks and Rec Department. Um, but while I'm speaking about Parks and Rec, I also wanted to thank Abby's staff, particularly Heather, for, um, the great organization she's been doing with the Spring Pickleball League. Um, everyone I speak to, um, including myself, because I am participating in it, um, has been extremely, um, appreciative of the help of Heather and all the folks that are helping us input our, our data, our scores, um, and just the overall organization of the league. I also know, um, Heather spearheaded, um, spearheaded a large part of the web-based application that's involved with the league. Um, these programs, um, you think, well, hey, it's what we've always been doing, but they're not. These programs are new to Westminster, um, and this is the first time we've had a spring league, um, so it's kind of a learning process for everyone, as far as staff. Um, we've been always at the top of our game, hosting tons of events, like the wine stroll and the barbecue, and we've got it down a fine oiled machine. Um, but, um, starting to work in on the, um, programming is, um, a little bit more challenging and different, um, because we have pickleball, we have archery, and we have all kinds of things. So I just wanted to say thank you, Heather. Um, she's doing a great job, and I'm looking forward to some more of the, um, new programming. It's probably going to be coming around the corner. Um, in addition, uh, the last two weeks have been, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I think it's been rather crazy with spring. So I wanted to, um, shout out to Sweet Bay Farms on their ribbon cutting that was on April fifteenth. Um, that happened. Um, and, um. Not only Sweet Bay Farms, but also Eric. Um, they had their ribbon cutting. And a lot, both locations were, um, locations that, um. Were kind of historic, uh, not necessarily historic, but at least have some history for Westminster. Um, it was nice that Sweet Bay is taking on a legacy of bowmans and they're also continuing to, to sell plants and. And have great plans for themselves in the future. And on top of that, um, Eric, um, moved into what was, at least as far as I know of. The old Buick location. I'm sure there's some history that Mr. Dayhoff can, can tell us anyone, but, um, we're all now. Seeing new businesses come into spaces and utilizing space. That, um, has some history. So that's, that's pretty cool. Um, April nineteenth was the award ceremony for the Westminster Police Department and the twenty second was the Fire Department and their two hundredth anniversary. Um, the Fire Department will be hosting some other events later this year, um, that will be taking place, um, regarding the two hundredth anniversary. But I wanted to take a moment, um, to thank all the firefighters, past, present, future, and police officers. Um, and their families. Um, what I noticed, um, which I obviously knew, but it kind of was sent home to me when I was at the dinner on Saturday. Um, Saturday night, um, we have a lot of tradition and history in our, in our local fire department. Um, over the years, that tradition was not only being around a firefighter, which dates back, um, I believe. Council Dayhoff said how long that was and they do not have those years, but obviously more than a hundred years. Um, but, um, it also is a, as a community, a lot of us know that as seeing the carnivores that occur in the summer times, the oyster feeds, the fried chicken dinners, the pancake meals. All based on fundraising, the big money raffles, um, which is indeed community, but what we don't see often is what. The family of the firefighters and the firefighters and police officers. When, so, yeah. Um, not just of their time, but they're the ones who run into the fire. They're the ones who run to the scenes of accidents and crimes. And see people at their weakest moments. They save us from accidents and their, and the fires and, um. Most people can't do that. Um, so I want to thank them, but also their families, because their families are the ones. That make that fundraising possible, but also the ones that support our firefighters and police officers and EMTs. Um, when they have trouble dealing with what they deal with every day. So, um, I just wanted to send a thank you out to all of them. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um. Um, as you said, I'm very excited that the water reuse bill is all done. I, I know that, um, Ms. Emhols is excited. Staff is excited to get, uh, that project moving forward. Uh, so I greatly appreciate everybody's help. I will repeat all those names. Um, the other thing I will mention, just to give a brief update. Um, last, I believe it was last year, uh, we had an annexation. Agreement that we agreed to related to a property on the corner of Route one forty and Sullivan Road. That involved, I think, multiple parcels, if I remember correctly. Uh, and it's three different uses and the, the potential, uh, the applicant who wants to go in there. Uh, is a, uh, is a redevelopment to a sheet. Um, on Tuesday, per the agreement with the county, though, the approving authority instead of being our planning and zoning commission. Is actually the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission. On Tuesday, the eighteenth, I attended a meeting of the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, cause there was a special report regarding that project regarding tri- uh, traffic mitigation. Uh, there was a, a little bit of, shall we say, disagreement between the applicant, uh, and the county. Uh, regarding the extent of the traffic mitigation. I attended that hearing, uh, and I'm happy to report, uh, that the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission. Verbally unanimously, uh, agreed that the efforts that the, uh, applicant were making were reasonable. Uh, and indicated to them to proceed forward. That was an important step. Um, because otherwise, I think there would have been a real big possibility that the applicant, uh, would not have proceeded forward. Um, so they are quite pleased and it's good for us from a city of Westminster standpoint. Because that project is now moving forward. Uh, it still has several steps to go through. Uh, but I, I think it'll be a plus for the city in the long run, uh, to see that corner redeveloped and also for it to be coming into the city. And, uh, paying tax revenue. Uh, so that's it as far as my report is concerned. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoff. And we run now the ordinance and the regulations. We have, um, one item received, but it's activated almost immediately now. Adopted a resolution twenty-three dash zero four, a resolution of the Mayor and Common Council. For the city of Westminster, Maryland, granting a non-exclusive license to Chadlin LLC. In over and across a portion of Sycamore Street right of way. For the purpose of providing a driveway for ingress and egress, providing utilities to LT PT nine dash. One and a half or of ten, seven, eight, seventy-eight, seven thousand eight hundred fifty-four square feet. Sycamore Street map. One zero, uh, point zero one zero seven grid zero zero one three, parcel zero five two seven. Subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the license agreement and proven license agreement. Usually no trouble with those, but that one was very odd.
This is hard for you.
Uh, it must be four o'clock. We're not doing this again. We're going to, uh, on the.
Next week's meeting, yeah, Mr. President, except for a clock.
Mr. Depot, can you explain what the heck this is all about?
Thank you, yes. Uh, this all goes back to that vacant property in Sycamore Street that wants to develop out. And as you know, Sycamore Street isn't built out in that location. And this was just the way that the city worked for the property owner to provide ability to access the property so he can get a single family house there. Um, so he will provide a driveway from the intersection of Sycamore and Winchester, uh, just to the north. Um, get the name of the roadway, just my mind. I had it like before the meeting. And it's solely just allowing access to be provided to the single family house for short term until Sycamore Street is fully built. So that's the license agreement that's before you. So. So back when March twenty-seventh, two thousand and three, the Mayor and Common Council introduced ordinance twenty-three oh two. And ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council accepting a quick claim deed. To an unimproved portion of Sycamore Street located between East Green Street and West, West Winchester Avenue. In the city of Westminster. So again, the first step was acquiring the property and the right of way. Um, on April tenth, twenty twenty-three, the Mayor and Common Council adopted ordinance twenty-three oh two, which became effective on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So before today is resolution twenty-three oh four, granting a non-exclusive license to. License agreement to Chadlin LLC in over and across a portion of Sycamore Street right of way. For purpose, providing the driveway for ingress and egress. And providing utilities to that unimproved property located along Sycamore Street. Subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the license agreement and approving the license agreement. And with that, staff recommends that the Mayor and Common Council adopt resolution twenty-three oh four, as provided in attachment one of this report. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Motion. And if we adopt resolutions, twenty-three dash zero four.
I'll move, Mr. President.
The one by Mr. Kovachi and the second by Mr. Hoff. Any questions from Mr. Depot or any comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hoff.
Uh, I'd just want to commend staff because, uh, having read through this. This is a very reasonable compromise to be business friendly to somebody who has a very small lot. To allow them to proceed forward because it would just be uneconomical for them to construct that as a public street. But I'm also glad to see how staff and the staff address the fact that eventually this will hopefully. Become a through street and a public street when other parcels around it are grown up. So. I just want to commend staff for really thinking this through. Uh, allowing the, the small lot owner to move forward, but also thinking long-term about what would happen. Uh, when a future project gets developed and the fact that eventually that street will likely be built. Um, so just great job from a staff standpoint. So I just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Josh. Anyone else?
Mr. President, Mr. Dayhoff. A number of years ago, when we were working on smart growth initiatives back in the late nineties, most of the early two thousands. Infill development was one of the things that were very much emphasized. Infill development, brownfields, um, issues like that in the urban environment. So this is a prime example. Um, of, of adaptive reuse of, of infill development, of, um, providing opportunities for folks to build houses. And to do development inside the urban area instead of out in the corner. Um, and this one, this one is really a tricky one. It goes back to the Brazil annexation from a long time ago. And, uh, there's probably some more opportunities with the Brazil annexation. It goes back to what the eighteen. So I really applaud staff for being flexible and coming up with an out of the box and creative solution to a very difficult problem. That did not take into consideration geology or the border. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it. That's all for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Anyone else? There is a very respectful bond of vote or in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And supposed to a day, yeah, I see that, you know, I see that, and the resolution of the doctor.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, unfinished business, there's no unfinished business, which I'm aware. Does anybody have any unfinished business to bring forward to the council? Here we go, move on to new business. New, new business, uh, council, does anybody, that I'm aware of, does anybody have any new business? Here we go, move on to departmental reports. Is it mostly you, the departmental reports, or do you need your deputy to step in again?
No, I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Um, Councilmember Hoff, thank you for acknowledging, um, the work that the planning department did on that last item. Um, I think the planning department under the leadership of Mr. Depot, um, has consistently attempted to find creative solutions. That although we are limited to what the code allows us to do, so. A lot of that work goes on behind the scenes. A lot of that work is on the back of Mr. Depot himself. Um, and the, neither the council and sometimes not even myself see all of that work that goes on. Um, because things just get built, people go into new spaces. Um, you know, a, a tenant comes out, a new tenant comes in, we don't see any of that behind the scenes work that's done by the planning department. Um, so thank you for acknowledging that in this case, and we'll start tonight with Mr. Depot.
Thank you. Just one item, um, on April twentieth, the Planning and Zoning Commission held its public hearing on annexation seventy-five. And resolution twenty-three oh two, this is for one-one-three-one Avondale Road, or known as the hair property. For a total annexation area of seventy-three point nine four six four acres. The commission forwarded annexation number seventy-five to the Mayor and Common Council with a favorable recommendation. And this annexation is scheduled to be before the Mayor and Common Council on May eighth. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay. Okay, I want to talk for just a minute about the wine stroll. Um, I just want to, to thank the Mayor and Council for their support. Um, all of the strolls that the staff puts on are, are events that they themselves are very excited for as well. So we were extremely disappointed that we had to cancel that. Um. We work very hard to make sure we can put on excellent events for every, everyone. But I think one thing we've certainly learned, and maybe I'd say I learned it, cause I'm, I'm still fairly new. Is that the wine stroll is very clearly a beloved event in town. And I think that's a good reminder to know. Um, we don't always know how much folks in town like things. So this, this show seems to be one of those examples. So, uh, with that, we will move on to the Recreation Department. Ms. Groper.
Hello, everybody. I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that our city nature hunt is, uh, starting. This Friday with our kickoff party at Wakefield Valley Park. Um, so Friday, the twenty-eighth, from three-thirty to six-thirty, we will be introducing everyone to the iNaturalist app. Uh, we have a beautiful buzz program. We have nature walks happening every hour on the hour. Crafts for children, uh, we'll be unveiling our prizes for the different, um, tiers of. Observation that people make. And sadly, I know I'm staring down another rainy forecast for this event. So we are also working on alternative plans. Um, so stay tuned, everyone, to our Facebook page. Uh, for details on that if we do have to pivot because of weather. But we will be prepared to still have some type of, of an event. Um, also, we are working earnestly on getting our pool ready for opening day. Um, so we are busy hiring staff and working alongside Keller Brothers Construction. Um, so that we can begin our preparations for the start of our season as they finish up with phase one. Of the renovation project. So we are very excited, um, to be opening our pool. For the first time in two seasons now. So that concludes my report unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions for the Recreation Department? We will move on to Public Works Department, Mr. Tech.
Thank you, Ms. Emhols. Uh, just two quick things, or three. Green Street sidewalk. Bridge is supposed to start this Wednesday. They got delayed due to other project that they were on. Uh, the I and I project is in Kings Park. They're going to line that in the next two days. Then the easy things are done and they are waiting on permits at that point from the county for the rest of the work. Uh, and then the clock tower, the construction of the clock tower is going to be moved. It's, uh, been. Zero hangup so far with the construction part, so it's all running well. So, is there any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Are there any questions for Public Works Department? And move on to IT. What's more?
I think it was the last, I don't have any to report today.
Okay, any questions for IT Department? We'll move on to House, thanks, Mr. Brad.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. From the council, any questions? Okay, um, Ms. Rogers is not here for the Finance Department. I just want to take a quick opportunity.
We can let the, um, in the Bishop's Guard, uh. One-sixth apartment, yeah, no, the, um.
Bishop's Guard.
Bishop's Guard, yeah. Um, Bishop Guard is, as far as I know, there are no new issues. Um, they, everything they have committed to do, to the best of my knowledge, they have done. Uh, we haven't received any new complaints. Um, but we keep in contact with them, uh, regularly. But there's, there's no new overflows of anything, whatever has come of, they have a visual, or site that addressed them. And so we're real pleased with where they are at this point.
Okay, so Karen, no more questions. We'll move on to the Finance Department. Ms. Rogers is not here today, so I just want to. Take a chance to thank all of staff. We put the budget together, we start working on it in January. And it is an all-staff-on-deck kind of, um, process and document, uh, with ten million questions. So I just want to thank everyone for pivoting quickly and, um, and helping to answer all those questions along the way. Um, we will move now to the Human Resources Department. Ms. McCullough.
Good evening. Uh, the Human Resources Department, we continue to assist, um, all departments, uh, with, uh, recruiting for positions. Uh, on the nineteenth, uh, the HR, uh, staff, uh, attended Carroll County Community, um. Job fair. Uh, we had a lot of participants, uh, to come to our table and we received some, uh, resumes. Uh, we put together, um, a flyer of our positions, uh, in a snapshot. So, uh, that was successful. And on Friday, the twenty-second, um, we attended the meet and greet for the CDL class. Um, at Carroll County Community College, um, where we've been sending our, uh, employees for CDL training. Um, and, uh, uh, other employers, uh, participated. And the city of Westminster, uh, they, they thank, uh, the city for, um, our. Constant, um, uh, en- enrollment of employees, uh, throughout, uh, the training. That completes my report.
Are there any questions for the Human Resources Department? And we will, anything's up at the Department Chief.
Evening, Mayor and Council. On, uh, Wednesday morning, I will be the guest speaker at the Community Services Council meeting. Um, they've asked me to speak on crime and safety. So I'll be giving that presentation. On Thursday, May the eleventh, um. The State Attorney's Office are, are holding their annual drug and overdose prevention vigilance. That's going to be held at the Saint John Church Board account. On May the fifteenth, uh, the Chamber of Commerce has their Public Safety Awards. It's being held at the Pleasant Valley Fire Hall. Several of our members will receive awards, including the Police Officer of the Year Award. On Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, um, that's first responder appreciation lunch sponsored by the Health Department. Uh, where they bring, um. Lunch to first responder locations, along with somebody in recovery, uh, with an inspirational story. That's all that I have unless there are any questions.
Karen, none.
Uh, Councilmember Dayhoff, do you have anything for the Fire?
Karen, now, Councilmember Dayhoff, do you have anything for the Fire Department?
Um, no, not for me. Thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes the department reports.
Great, very much. Uh, the final item on our agenda is in comments when we invite the public with the Mayor and Council on any issues between this afternoon's agenda or any other city issues. Citizens not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments or concerns via email at comments@westminstermv.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the Mayor and Council. Commenters can include their address and phone number with their comments. We'll now invite comments from anyone who is present Saturday in our mind. Everyone, this is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts and concerns with the Mayor and Council. Is there anyone with the staff who would be heard? So please give us your name and address to the back.
Linda, copy one nine five West Main Street. I'd like to thank the Mayor, City Council, and Chief Ledwell and Eric Brown for working on the problem of one six five, one six five West Main Street. They, some action was taken right away. I understand that they recited some violations. I have had to replace my young woman planet, young male planets, because the people living there are dangerous. And I, but I have done, the Daniel students live in the house right now. And they were cranking and throwing things just to prevent them, but they went in the house. They didn't call the police. But I understand Chief Ledwell and Eric Brown are working on it. And that's everybody. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Depot. Anyone else? All right. Anyone else wish you heard that concludes our agenda and the meeting. Our next meeting will be held next Monday, May first, a special meeting. Please note that we'll be meeting really that day at four o'clock as well. And with that, without objection, we are adjourned.